Welcome, everyone. Thanks for joining us this evening. We're here tonight to get to know these wonderful six candidates running for the Aspen School District Board of Education. I believe the ballots are going to be mailed out starting Monday-ish, so they're not out yet, but look for the ballots in your mail. As Susan said, I'm Crystal Logan. I'm a vice president at the Aspen Institute, and I'm delighted to be the moderator this evening. I know that we're -- there's some traffic out there, so hopefully some other folks will join us, but thanks for joining us. Special thanks to Superintendent Tom Heald and to the district for hosting this great event. So we have two hours, but we have a lot to cover here, so I'm going to be really strict with the timing so that everyone has a chance to speak and to respond. When you hear the sound, please just wrap up your thoughts, so each of you will have plenty of time to respond to other questions. And as a reminder to the audience, we have six candidates and two open seats, so also please silence your cellphones. Thank you. So I'm going to introduce the candidates in alphabetical order, but after that, it'll all be randomized, and so I'll call on you randomly after that. Katie Frisch, she and Adam have two children in the middle school and have lived in the district for 16 years. She's the president of her family-owned cable TV equipment manufacturing business located in Syracuse, New York. Next, John Galambos. John, he and Robin have three children, all attended K through 12 at the Aspen School District, and they're now in college. He's spent 26 years in the Valley and founded his architecture firm, Galambos Architects, here in 1998. Patsy Kirkoulis, she and her husband Paul have two children in the district and have lived in the district for 19 years. Jonathan Nickel, he and his wife Paula have three children in the district. He's the CFO of a multinational corporation and has lived in the district for six years. Next, Jim Pomeroy. Jim, he and his wife Jill have two children raised in the district. He's a zoning officer with the city of Aspen, and he's lived in Aspen most of his life. And last but not least, Bettina Slusar. She and her husband Dan Goldman have two children in the district. She's a consultant for Aratiem.
Aratiem.
Aratiem. She's also a part-time ski instructor and volunteer, and she's lived in the district for four years. So, welcome to you all. Okay, let's jump right in. Our first question, and we will start with John, if you can pass the microphone to John. Please tell us why you are running to become a member of the board of the Aspen School District. You have three minutes. Thank you.
Am I answering the second question too, or just the first?
Just the first.
Okay. My name is John Galambos, and I am running for the board because I am full of gratitude. We have three kids who have gone through the system. They're all in college. I feel like we have an excellent school system. I feel like we are doing 90% right. We need to work on the 10% that need work. I feel like I have time now to give back to the school now that we're in empty nesters. And I just feel like I have the passion for this job. It's something that I've been thinking about for a long time, and I didn't want to do it while our kids were in school because frankly, I like to spend time with them. It was a choice I've made. It's a choice I've made in my business to keep it small, and it's a choice I made to wait until this time to run for the board. So it's a privilege to run for the board. It's been really fun doing all the thinking for the papers. I love the writing and all the rigor of it, and this has been a pleasure, so thank you.
Great. Next is Patsy.
Well, I have--
Hold the mic.
Okay, sorry.
There you go.
Well, I was a full-time, working full-time and had two kids in school, and about four years ago, I took some time off and really started dedicating myself to helping out the teachers and helping out the school to see where and what problems there were at school, if there were any problems. I think that we have so many great things in place at school. We have some great teachers. We have great faculty. I think that there are some things that we definitely need to work on, but I feel that they are all workable items and that we got a little complacent with the last board and didn't really continue to work towards what our school can be. And I think it's, as a mother of two, I have two middle school students, I think it's really important to have our educational system in place. And I chose to run because I thought I could make a difference. I chose to run because I, last year, I got together with a team of people to help really bring to light some of the climate and culture issues that have been happening in our school district that were brought to me because it's a small town, and a lot of the people who work in the district are also are very close friends. And sitting and having dinner with them over periods of time and hearing some of these stories, I realized that there were some things that needed to change, and I'm really excited about making, having that opportunity to make the change.
Great. Next is Jonathan.
Okay, hello, everyone, all the fellow candidates and everything. I'm not going to say a lot about this last time because I got cut off. But anyway, so I'm running because this is the way I give back. I was on my children's previous school board in Bogota, Columbia. It was one of the top schools in the country. I was on that for five years, and I found it was a really great way to give back and a way that I could leverage my skills and experience to make an impact. So, you know, in our family, it's, we feel that it's important to give back to the community. My wife's on the board of the Valley Settlement Projects, which helps immigrant families settle in the, in the community as well, so, you know, that's kind of really why I'm doing this. I also feel that I have just kind of a lot of experience that can be very helpful, especially in the current time that Aspen School District is facing. Served on the school board, as I said, five times, or five years previously, ran, managed strategic planning committee, managed a board selection committee for a new superintendent. I have 15 years of board experience outside the school board experience, on professional boards, and I'm the CFO of a multinational company, so that, that helps me a lot with the prioritization of assets and resources that, that the actual Aspen School District is facing. And then I think probably the most important thing is to continue making a positive impact on the, on the district. I think if you look at the six priorities that are on the school board priorities, three of those were recommendations that were in the DAC recommendations that we put out three years ago. And so we've been able to really change the impact, you know, and also people are now, not only are three of the recommendations that were part of the school board, or excuse me, in the DAC recommendations, part of the school board recommendations. All of the candidates here today are talking about things that were also in there, teacher turnover, teacher salary. So these are important things in the way we've been able to change the dialogue, so we've already made a great impact, and I just want to continue doing that. And it's interesting to see really how far we've come. When we first started talking about this, we were actually kind of lionized as a DAC, saying, "You guys are just, you know," criticizing the school, "There's nothing to this." And we went from, you know, saying, "Hey, there's a problem with the culture and climate," to knowing that only 15 or 16% of the staff thought that the district leadership was doing the right thing, or was able to do the right thing in difficult circumstances. So we were able to really continue to push forward, present the data, had to go through after that first experience with the board where they said our data, our recommendations were misleading and inaccurate. They never told us why, but, so we got through that thing. Then we re-presented the same recommendations pretty much again, slightly modified based on some recommendations from the VOE, but basically in their core where they were the same. So, you know, kind of just sticking it out, making sure that the messengers are there, that action really gets taken on those things. You know, I helped the teachers in their salary negotiations, you know, second year of 6% increases, both thanks to them and some great support from the board. So that's the positive impact I want to continue to make, and that's why I'm running.
Great. Thank you. Next up is Jim Pomeroy.
So, as many of you know, I have lived basically in the Valley for my entire life, went to the schools, graduated from all of the local schools. My kids have graduated from the local schools. I was a teacher in the school. I feel a great deal of gratitude, as John mentioned as well, that this, this place, this town and this community has given me a great deal, and I want to be able to give back. I think I have a lot to give in terms of being a unique candidate as sort of the average Joe. I have a regular job. I live in employee housing. I'm, I'm not anybody haza gazza, and I think we need to have that. That has not been emphasized enough in our community. There's not enough folks that are just average Joes going out and volunteering on boards and being part of the community governance, and I'm really wanting to strengthen that and make that a priority for the community moving forward, and I'm excited to be a part of that. I've got lots of other reasons, which we will get into, I think, when we get into our opinions on priorities for the school board, and I'll get into that more, but that is definitely one of the main reasons that I'm involved here.
Great. Next is Bettina.
Thank you so much for coming tonight. My name is Bettina Slusar, and it's a pleasure to be here. I actually prepared some remarks. Time is precious, so I want to dive right in. We're here to look at, and more importantly, to try and solve, an intriguing problem, which is why our well-funded school district is struggling to attract and retain staff. Why are our kids struggling academically, and how do we choose the right people to fix the situation? I think the challenges that are facing the next board and superintendent fall into three categories. First, we need a school district that cares about teachers, and we need our teachers to be part of our community. We currently pay a starting salary of $43,000 a year with no housing. After 10 years in a PhD, we pay $62,000, but still no housing. So our teachers can't actually live in the community. There's an announcement at school every day, if you've been there at the end of the day, about the teacher bus that's leaving for Carbondale. Don't be late, don't miss the teacher bus. Our teachers are like migrant workers, being shipped in and out of town. They can't make a life here. That means that when they want to have kids, they leave. That's one of the reasons we have turnover. That means we get lots of new teachers, we train them, and then they leave, and we start over. That means that we break the bond between kids, teachers, and the community because they don't live here. We need to dig into this. Why is this happening? I will ask the questions and make sure that the community gets answers. I believe that my business experience and my finance experience are going to be crucial in helping to solve this dilemma, and I'm ready to get to work. Second, we need to do better for our kids. I love the school district. My kids are getting a great education. That said, according to our superintendent at the last Board of Education meeting, only 41% of our third graders are where they're supposed to be right now. And guess what? We now know that third grade is a leading indicator of where we expect high school performance to be. So that means that 60% of our kids are not ready, and this is in Aspen. I think we can do better. On the other end, we send a high percentage of kids to college, and it's a point of pride for our district, but a large number of those kids don't actually graduate from the school where they enroll. What's going on? We also have kids who don't want to go to college. We make them feel bad about their choices and themselves. We tell them that without college, they're destined to live in poverty. We can do better than that. I've been working with the staff at Aspen High School on expanding how and what we offer these kids, and I'm eager to do more. How do we solve this? I'll ask the questions and make sure the community gets answers. And third, we have a huge opportunity in Aspen to take on issues that are plaguing kids nationwide. We have large wealth disparity, and the kids feel it. We have safety concerns at school, and kids are afraid. Our kids are grappling with high anxiety in an age of instability, and it's not limited to Aspen. We're making great moves. We've introduced social and emotional curriculum, and we're beefing up our counseling staff. I understand this because after leaving corporate life, this kind of work became my focus, but we need to do more. How can we get creative here? I will ask the questions and make sure the community gets answers. I'm confident that I can help hire a superintendent that gets it and is prepared to take action.
Okay, Katie Frisch, last but not least.
Thank you. Thank you, first of all, Crystal, the Aspen Institute, for lending you out. The board, for almost everyone being here, this is great. Tom, administration, where did he go?
Right back here.
Hiding behind me. And most importantly, everyone who came out tonight and everyone who is watching this on grassroots, so thank you very much. So Crystal already went through the, kind of the introduction. I want to make one correction. I have a high schooler, not two middle schoolers.
Oh, wow.
So I have a high schooler and a middle schooler now, and a husband, Adam, and one very active dog. You forgot about Podme. But more importantly, I've spent quite a bit of time in my 16 years here in Aspen volunteering. We feel very strongly as a family about community service from, in my husband's eight years, ooh, eight years on city council. I've spent 10 years on the financial advisory board for the school district, 13 years on the AVSC board, two years as president, I think four years as treasurer. So we've, I've spent a lot of time volunteering in this community and getting a lot of volunteer experience as well. I'm also currently serving on the board of the Roaring Fork Youth Orchestra, which is an organization that more people should know about, and Aspen Public Radio as well. What can I say? I'm very passionate about education. It is the most important thing we do for our community and the most important thing we do for our kids, and we got to get it right. So I'm running because I'm passionate about this, and I think we're doing many, many great things. We have many great programs at the school. We have expanded many mental health things. We have outdoor education, great academic programs, IB, college counseling, thank you, Kathy Klug. You know, we're getting our kids into college. We are doing many, many wonderful things, but there are a lot, a lot of opportunities. We need good fiscal management. If we want to pay our teachers as much as we possibly can, if we want to get housing for our teachers, we have tapped out a lot of resources already. We have been very creative, thanks to many community members, in garnering taxes, in doing bond issues historically. We have more opportunities to do those in the future, but I'm not sure there's a lot of more to be had. We need to make the most of what we have right now. Yes, we do need to search for more financial opportunities and more money so we can, we can be the best-funded district in Colorado and the best-funded district, and the best-performing district, but we have to do it right, and we have to be fiscally responsible while we're doing it. In addition, the academic improvements that need to be made, you know, I was at that same board meeting with Bettina, and we have some issues in academic performance that require some immediate attention, that can't be glossed over. You know, so overall, I'm running because I feel like I could be a board member who is willing to listen to the community, willing to hear the hard stories and what's really going on, and come up with some solutions. So thank you.
Thank you. The next question, we'll start with Patsy. So the question is, in your opinion, what are the two most important priorities of a school board member? And you have two minutes to respond.
Well, currently, we have a stand-in superintendent, and I think one of the very first priorities for being a board member is to hire a new district superintendent, and I think that we really need to take our time. We need to find some good leadership for our district. We have had, you know, last year, I think, was a very hard year for people. There was a lot of things that came to the surface about climate and culture. There was a lot of things that came to the surface about really what's happening in our school, what are our kids learning? And I think we need, that one of the first priorities is to find a leader who can bring us together, who can create a district, create a campus, and create a K through 12 curriculum. There are such unique things about our district that we, I think it, we'll take a special superintendent. It's not one who's going to be looking over 30 schools. He has four schools and the cottage to look over, and that's a little different than a rate, like a lot of superintendents have. So I think that's one of the very, very first priorities. And with that leadership, I feel that we will be able to establish specific and achievable goals, goals, and get this process of our school back together and back on the right track. Secondly, I think that budgetary practices are something that we need to get in, we have to establish our priorities for the budget, and then we need to align our budget with those priorities. And if our priorities are to pay our teachers more, which is something I would like to see as well, then we need to find areas that we can move some monies around and help support our teachers and help support other aspects of our school that we want to see improved.
Next, thank you. Jonathan is next.
Okay. Okay, so I'm going to say this in two parts. One, I think the most important thing, most important things overall are finding the right leader, getting, fixing our culture and climate, making sure that we continually work on that and get it repaired because it suffered, and then making sure that we're supporting our teachers and all that goes along with that in terms of teacher salaries, resources, housing, and all those kinds of things. Now, I think specifically as a board member, really, there's two things that need to be boiled down or that are really priorities. One is, it's the same, picking that leader, but the other one, then, from a board perspective, is working together in a unit to come together and to basically improve the corporate governance system and improve the interactions of the board so that we can actually be support for that new leader. Because if the board is dysfunctional and you bring in a new leader, things aren't going to work out. So, I mean, there are overall priorities of things that you need to function on, but if you're just looking at it from a board perspective, it, it means coming around together to a conclusion about who the best leader and the future leader for the school is, and then getting our act together as a board to make sure that we're really giving that person the support that they need to make those other changes that need to happen, and to be able to fix the climate and culture, and to be able to give the resources to the teachers, and to be able to make sure that those things happen so that academics can improve. That's it.
Great. Jim is next.
So, much like, pretty much, I think, everyone here, we all know that hiring our next superintendent is going to be one of the biggest priorities for our entire institution, especially now, more than any time, because they're also going to be implementing brand-new strategic plans, brand-new facility plans. They're going to be dealing with culture, climate issues that have been brought up, communication issues that have been brought up. I actually was on the hiring committee to hire the last, the most, the current director of the Country Day School, who has doubled the size of their school, grown their endowment beyond belief, and has done a great deal for that. So I have the experience also of, of hiring a dynamic leader who can lead things forward. But in terms of priorities for me is going to be two things. One, there's a lot of talk about academics, and I, I, all of our kids, all of us want our kids to be academically strong, but one of the things that Aspen has always done better than anybody else is building a whole child, not just academics, and we have to not lose track of that priority. As with a kid in college right now, he deals with difficulties all the time. What gets him through those difficulties is not how well he did on a test. It's how well he deals with other kids, how well he communicates. It's socio-emotional issues that gets him through those tough times, and it's the things that other children who fail out, and he tells me all the time about friends of his who don't do well, it's not the academics, it's all the other issues that makes it challenging for them. That's just the reality of life, and we need to continue to make that. Whole children, well-rounded, those make well-rounded adults. The other thing that's really important to me is this entire concept of culture and climate and listening. Our district has some serious transparency issues. We have no idea. It's a big black box, and we have no idea why anything happens. They're pretty good at telling you, here's what's going to happen, but they don't tell you why it's happened, what the decision-making went into it, and that has to change. Has to change with the teachers, has to change with staff, has to change with the community. Right now, it's not happening, and that's going to be one of the biggest priorities for the board to make clear to the new superintendent that this has to be done correctly in the future.
Thank you. Next is Bettina.
It's really gratifying. I think we all see the issues fairly similarly, for the most part, and that's important because I, obviously, the first priority for the board is to pick the new superintendent. That's, in fact, the superintendent is the only employee that the board has, so getting that right is super important, and I think that we, I don't know what happened last time, but I think that this time, finding somebody who's a visionary, who can connect with the good work that's going on right now with the strategic plan and the, the plans underneath for the facility, and what that's going to look like as we go into the future, all need to be extremely important parts of what we look at in a new superintendent. I think we need to do really thorough background checks on the superintendent and talk to people who worked for them in prior jobs and find out how they felt about it, because we can look at a lot of data, but at the end of the day, I personally think that the anecdotes of the people on the ground are as important for understanding how that person's going to function in our community. And then I, I agree with my colleagues that transparency and communication are key for how we function going forward, communication being two ways. So one of the thoughts that I've had recently is, instead of just having the public comment section at the board meeting where people speak, the board can't respond, and that's the end of it, maybe we need to do some town hall-type meetings where there's actually back and forth, and people can hopefully civilly make their points and hear the other side, and see if we can start to come to a center. I mean, I really do think that in, here in Aspen, if we can put some of the harshness aside, we, we know each other. We're neighbors, we're friends. We can talk to each other about some of these issues and see if we can come to a place of understanding. So I think that the healing is a huge priority for the next board.
Next is Katie.
She's sat in her own order.
Yeah, I know. We're all over the place here.
It's poor microphone. So, the top priority of the school board member is the children, not the superintendent, not the teachers, it's the children, that's why we're here. So, the whole point of the school district is to educate our children, so the very top priority is to do that. That's our mission statement, and I couldn't feel more strongly about this. In order to do that, we obviously need to hire a new superintendent, and we need to onboard that superintendent and create a strategic plan and a vision for the district. I'm thrilled that that process has started, both the process of hiring, hiring a superintendent in terms of hiring the search firm that's going to do that. In order to do this, we need experienced leadership. It would be nice to have people who have actually hired and fired people, who've had the opportunity to explore what it means to hire an executive, and have also understood how hard it is to have to fire somebody as well, because if you're going to understand and execute on a plan, you need to know what it takes to do that. So, I'm confident that my business experience and my, I've fired a lot of executives in my time, will be helpful in trying to, and unfortunately fired a few, will be helpful in trying to do that. So, first of all, the kids, their academic, their social-emotional growth, their mental health, everything is critical, but those two, those are the two most important things in my mind.
Great. John.
You stole my thunder about the kids. I know. It's hard to come after all this. I, I want to comment, you know, I've written about this before, but my decision grid is kids first. So whatever comes before the board, whatever comes as, as an opportunity for the board, I'm going to filter it, is this best for the kids? Is this going to enhance them? Are they going to be better educated? Are they going to be a better whole child? I appreciate, Jim, what you said about that, because I think that's critical. But first, first priority in my decision grid is kids. Second priority is teachers. So if it's good for, if, you know, happy teachers--
So, if it's good for, if, you know, happy teachers make happy kids, right? And so, second priority for decisions that are gonna come up is teachers. Third is administration. We need to support and bolster our administration and help them teach and train and develop our staff in a great way. My last priority is parents. We need to speak to the parents, but unfortunately, often in this town, the parents try to come first in front of the kids, and they speak and they come to public meetings, and they do a lot of damage. And we need some, yes, we need some healing in this town, and it needs to happen from all of us in this room. So, one of my big priorities is communication. We are not doing a good job of communicating. We are, everyone in this town has an opinion, everyone thinks they know what they're doing. We have a bunch of professionals, our teachers are professionals. We need to listen to them and figure out what's best for them. Our administrators are professionals. So, we need to work on our communication. We need to foster a climate of civility and respect, and it starts with everyone in this room. We all own this. It is not the teachers, it is not the principals, it's us in this room. We're the ones who own this issue. We're the ones who brought it, well, thank you. I'll just leave it at that.
Great. Okay, so the next question, the current Board of Education came up with six priorities going forward, and you've all been given these priorities so that you know what they are. So, choose one of these and it'll give you the, oops, sorry. Sorry, here, yeah, yeah, sorry, yeah. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, thank you. Thank you. Okay, so this will tell you what order you're going in and what topic you are covering. And I believe you have three minutes to tell us. So, the question is, you have three minutes to tell us how you will support and/or improve this particular priority that you chose.
Okay. I chose academics, which says number one on the top here, and isn't that ironic? I'm gonna say, in general, we are a very good public school. We graduate great kids who are well-prepared for the future. Guys, the sky is not falling, okay? We are not failing our kids. Overall, we perform very well for a small school in the mountains. We can't rest on these laurels, and we need to keep our focus on the academics learning for all students. We also excel in other ways that support our academics with outdoor ed. That teaches resiliency and things that are really important that kids bring into the future. We need to look at a 12-year view of our achievement in academics. This is not a one-off thing. Our kid, our son, had a really terrible seventh and eighth grade. I didn't think he was gonna make it. Something happened, I think it was you, Kathy, that scared him with a blank transcript in high school that said he got his act together. So, one or two bad years doesn't make, doesn't ruin our district. There's all these data opportunities. One of them that is talked about in the district is the development of critical thinking. I think that's the most important one. I, you know, test scores are forgotten pretty soon, but if you can think critically, you're gonna be successful in life. However, we need work, and there's a lot of, you've talked about third grade reading or math in fifth grade. I've been studying this chart and that's been issued by the state. We've got a lot of red bars here. Those red bars mean that we do not meet the requirements, okay? We gotta work on those areas. But, you know, the thing I was digesting with this, and I'm looking at this, these are all just stats. They're just stats. You know what's important here? There are 31 English learner kids that we are not doing well with. Behind these stats are kids. Behind these stats are human beings that need our help, and we have the resources to deal with this. We have the resources in this, right in this room, we could grab a volunteer and help these kids. I'm tired of everybody pointing out all the problems, we need to start getting some solutions, we need volunteers. If you're, Robin and I had a philosophy when we were, when we were with our kids, and, you know, if you have an elementary kid, help that teacher. If you have a middle-school kid, encourage that teacher, because your kid's probably a jerk. If you have a high-school kid, thank that teacher, because they're teaching them things that I don't know. They're teaching us way beyond what I'm able to teach them. We have a great school, we need to bolster our academics, but behind all these stats, remember, we have kids that need to be taught, and they need to learn, and they need to be nurtured in the right environment. Thanks.
Thank you. Who's number two? Jim?
All right, so I picked the lucky winner of strategic planning, one of the major goals of the board, and it's, couldn't be better timed. Right now, for anybody who's not informed on this, the district is creating an entire, really, the first strategic plan they've ever had on how to move forward. We are literally looking at our entire school and saying, who do we want to be over the next 20 years? What do we want to look like? And at the same time, we're also looking at our facilities plan, saying, what structures, what buildings, what cars, what everything, literally, to make this strategic plan happen. At the same time, then, we're gonna have a brand-new superintendent that has to then put that in place. A few years after that, we're gonna have brand-new bonds, brand-new funding sources to help take the plan that we've created and pay for it. So, all of this comes back to that strategic plan, and it's literally the most important thing that we can be doing. It's gonna give us our direction moving forward. But part of it, from board perspective, and I appreciate it's something that John brought up in the article yesterday in the newspaper, it takes proper board governance. We are not gonna, as board members, going to be able to say, do this, 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 and this. We are going to hire a superintendent, give him policies, give him a plan to follow, and then that person will have to execute that plan. We have to come up with a good plan, or it won't get executed properly. And, but much of that's gonna take, as we've all talked about, communication. We are gonna have to have a lot of conversations with the overall community on what kind of plan they want. We can't just tell the community, this is the plan you get. We have to listen to the community and have them, have multiple and multiple opportunities for folks to weigh in on what they want the school to look like moving forward.
Great. Who's number three?
Okay, so I got superintendent selection, which I feel like we've kind of beaten to death. So, in the interest of moving quickly, I will say that I do think that there's gonna be a committee. We've already hired a search firm who did a good job with the new CFO, which is awesome. I, we've, I've spoken to a few of our current board members about encouraging the search firm to be creative, look at not just public school superintendents, but look at headmasters from private schools, look at people who have run a building before. One of our administrators said, you know, to that person, not using gender, because then I'd give it away, making sure that the superintendent has actually run a building is super-important, because then they know what it's like to do the job that they're asking somebody else to do. I think it's important to get a lot of community input. I think that we need to do a lot of deep dives into not just what it says on the resume, but what the people who've worked for that person have to say about what the environment was like. Because if there's anything I'm absolutely sure about, it's that we ended up with an environment that most of our staff was not happy with, and we just can't do that. It's too small a town, it's too important a job, and so we need to make sure that we have somebody who's really a visionary leader, and I think that's gonna take the whole village to make sure that we're happy with that choice. So, that's it.
Number four.
I'm number four, and I think this is a good follow-up to what Bettina was just saying. I got climate and culture, and I think that we learned a lot last year about our climate and culture and where our teachers and our staff felt that they were not being heard, and I think that a huge priority to help the climate and culture is to, number one, we need to listen to our teachers, listen to the staff, and we need to make sure that they feel like they are being heard. So, it's one thing for them to tell us a story, but then we need to act upon that, and we need to make sure that they feel safe, and there's a safe environment for them to bring forward some of the issues that they are feeling in their, in the district. I also think that leadership will be a huge thing for climate and culture. I think that it is a trickle-down effect from the top, and if our leader is open and honest and has integrity, then our teachers are going to feel that, and they are going to feel like a community, and they are gonna, it's gonna come together like that. I don't think that fear-based leadership or fear-based learning is anything that has, that does not have a place in our district. I like your story about your son being scared, you know, from a blank transcript from Kathy, but personally, I don't think that fear-based learning and leadership is anything that makes our kids better people. It actually, I think, creates more anxiety, and we have students now that have more anxiety than ever, and I think this is the next step in climate and culture, is that we need to make them feel safe, and we need to make sure that our kids feel like they're being heard as well. And lastly, I know our parents all want to be heard, but I feel like with the right leadership in place, there's, the parents will feel better, and they're not gonna have to think that they need to partake in every process of our school. I do think there is a place for parents in the district, but I also think that there is a place for our district to actually work and run as a district with the right leadership in place. I think that can happen. So, I think our climate and culture is on its up and up. I think that we addressed a lot of this last year with all of the reports, and I feel like we need to have leadership with integrity, with honesty, and humility, and someone we can trust with accountability as well. And with all of those things, this, I do believe that our culture and climate will feel better, the teachers will feel better, and our students will feel better because of that, and we won't see a high turnover rate, which will then, of course, continue to help with bringing our school up to where it needs to be.
Thank you.
So, fiscal planning and guidance, I think I already talked a lot about this, but I'm gonna do it again. So, as I said, we are, I believe, very lucky, and we should be very grateful to be so well-funded as a district. We have such a generous community. A lot of the funding is from AEF, which is direct ownership, it's not just taxes, and I, for one, am very grateful for all the opportunities that it brings our kids. But we do need to use those funds effectively, and policies and procedures are one of the most effective ways to do that. I have noticed from attending some board meetings that every process isn't always in place that it should be. When you hear about large infrastructure projects that are happening that only have one bid, for example, that's a big problem. You can't spend a half a million bucks on a new boiler and only ask one person for a bid on it. So, I know that's being fixed, but it's very, not the boiler, the process, but it's very, but it's problematic, and it's indicative that there have likely been problems in the past. I don't know what they are, even having been on the FAB for 10 years, because the pass board, and this is something I think is also changing, has not been terribly open to the FAB, the Financial Advisory Board, the SACS and the DACS, and listening to all the different community members that are trying to be involved by volunteering their time. That needs to change, as well as more transparency with what's happening with all of those committees. The reason for that is, we need money to pay teachers, and we need money to house teachers, and we need to set those priorities. And the only way to address the budget, 60% of it, by the way, is spent on teacher salaries, and that's just salaries. It's a, plus, well, plus, then you have para on top of it, which is another 21%, almost, and then, oh, yeah, insurance, oh my goodness. So, it's a lot, and there's not a lot left over, so we need to make sure that any of the funds that are left over are spent properly. I also think that the finance, the finances have been pretty well-hidden. I mean, as a member of the FAB even, I have a hard time getting details. It's hard to know exactly how stuff is being spent. There is no reason why that can't be more transparent, we're a public entity, and we have lots of community members that want to serve on an advisory board, that have a lot of experience, we have board members who are accountants, too. But we also have a lot of other people who can, who can help out, and we need to listen to. Sitting on the FAB, I was amazed at a lot of the great ideas that came out of various community members in terms of ways to raise money for our school district, and we need to listen to people. So, thank you.
John?
Okay, I got number six, communications. So, I actually have, I think, a little bit different of attack on this than I think a lot of people. I definitely need, agree that the board needs to be more transparent and have open lines of communication with people, and make sure that you're receiving the right information from the people that are in the district, from whether it be teachers, staff, parents, all that stuff needs to happen. But when I look at what's happened in recent years, I actually feel like that there are a lot of instances where there's not enough good communication established at the school level, where things really happen. And, you know, a lot of the people on the DAC, and when we were discussing these things, a lot of the frustrations would be like, I have an issue, where do I take that? How do I get that addressed? And I think because there's not effective communication, a lot of times, between the parents and their teacher, and the parents and their principal, and the parents, and, you know, the school counselor, and for whatever reason, those systems aren't robust enough, that things end up going up to the board when they shouldn't necessarily be there. And so, I think that, you know, really strengthening those systems, I'm not saying the board can't do a better job, but I don't, you know, there's definitely another big whole area where things should be getting resolved at the building level and between the parents and their educators, and that we make sure that there are systems in place where people can raise issues in a non-confrontational manner, say their concerns, and have that happen. I mean, you know, it recently just happened where some parents went and, and, you know, had an issue with certain things that were, you know, presented in school and things that were happening. That should have gone first to the school administrators and been talked about there, and then if they didn't get resolution, well, then it goes up the chain of command. So, you know, I think there really needs to be a strengthening of that without taking away anything from that there's plenty the board can do as well to improve in all those areas, but I think it's kind of a two-pronged system there. And before my time runs out, there are two other things that were not on the list of six priorities that I think are really important. One is that the Board of Education needs to work on its effectiveness. They actually qualified themselves as having plenty to improve on just recently, so I think that's really great that they did that, and then it shows that there's plenty to be done into, into being able to fix that old, other old process. And I think there's also another huge thing about the social-emotional aspect that a couple of people have mentioned here, but, you know, it needs to be a top priority. Really, there's, you know, a crisis in our, with our youth these days, just about all the things that are happening to them, and that needs to make sure that we get, as a board and as a district, resources and priority placed on that to help our kids out, because they're really kind of getting bombarded from all sorts of different directions, and they need to be able to cope with that, and we need to be able to make sure that they help them do that.
Great. Thank you. Wonderful. Thank you. I think we covered everyone. So, the next, next, we're gonna start with Jim, so you can pass the mic to him. The following topics were generated through a random survey of staff and community partners, so you'll each have two minutes to respond to these questions. The first one is on school finance. The financing of public schools, as you all know, is becoming an ever-more-complex proposition. With the constraints and pressures on federal, state, and local funding, how would you balance and manage the funding needs for student learning and capital assets? and manage the funding needs for student learning and capital assets?
Well, as Katie brought up, this is not easy. You know, I think, you know, everybody's been talking about, there's been a lot of, of stories, a lot of people have been talking about teacher salaries, and I don't think anyone wants teachers to get paid less. If anything, we probably want everybody to get paid more. But if we're gonna do that, then we're also gonna need to figure out where that money comes from. And it has to come from somewhere. It's not, it doesn't just magically show up. And with our funding systems in Colorado, it's almost impossible to create new money. AEF helps with that, but we just have to, we just have to be very conscious of one, it's just a push-pull situation, unfortunately. Anything you pull from one place has to come from somewhere else. It's almost impossible to create it from scratch. We're, you know, one of the things that I was looking at the budget recently and noticed, that one of our biggest increases is actually, what did I write down in here, is the facilities. Transportation and facilities over the last three years has gone up 54%. I mean, these are, there's, we're, we're seeing gigantic increases that are not gonna be sustainable. Benefits have gone up 31%. These are very challenging things. It's great to say, we're gonna pay our teachers more, but you're gonna have to pay more for insurance, because we don't no longer have the money for the insurance to pay you more. So there's a lot of balancing that has to happen, and it's gonna take a lot of big, open conversations with many people, bringing in experts from all through our community on how to solve this and how to do it right. It can't be done with just five people. Can't be done with just a superintendent. One thing that will be helpful is that we, hopefully, will have good financial controls moving forward with a new CFO. And I think that's a, that's a promising start. And we'll have to see, but, you know, the, the priority has to be to have a balanced budget so that we can move forward in a solid fashion.
Great. Bettina is next on this question.
Thanks. So I don't know if this is the right thing to say in this forum, but I would, there's gonna be a ballot initiative, CC, which will help with our ability to get more revenue that we can put towards our schools. It also goes towards infrastructure, and it's meant to alleviate some of the pressure that Tabor has put on our ability to fund schools and infrastructure in Colorado. Certainly, we don't want to get into a situation where we've got a benefits cliff, which is what I came from in Chicago, and that just kept, keeps getting pushed along. Nobody's gonna pay it who's currently elected. We don't want that. But what we, we can't, we also can't keep paying teachers $43,000 a year and expect to get the best and the brightest here in Aspen. It's just not sustainable. So if it were up to me, I would say, I would bound, put the, the more emphasis on student learning and less emphasis on capital assets. At the same time, I've been at board meetings where the, the presentation on our buildings was pretty dismal. We have some, we need new roofs. Our water isn't working. There's some real, it, it's, it's, if you sit through the presentation that Gary Valvano does, it, we've got some pretty glaring capital issues that need to be dealt with. At the same time, we have a bond that's coming up, it's gonna roll off in 2020, that's got a mill tax attached to it, and if we can keep the mill tax, it won't increase anybody's taxes, one iota, but we'll be able to keep that revenue going. And with bonds at the lows that they're at right now, I do think that there are other opportunities for funding that we will be able to tap into. And I agree with my esteemed colleagues that it's, it takes a village. We've got some really smart people in this town who've done a lot of really great things, and I think we need to probably make the tent a little bigger in terms of who's involved in the conversation about how we get those, those salaries up to a sustainable level.
Thank you. Katie is next.
I do know some other stuff. Hopefully, someone will ask me a question about something else. So the, first of all, I wouldn't balance and manage this. This is a, as everyone says, a community effort. And this should come out, more than anything, out of the strategic plan. Notice the pivot to the strategic plan. The facility plan right now is viewed as a separate entity. And I couldn't disagree more strongly that it should be part of a strategic plan, not a separate thing. Every, every question we had in board priority that was discussed, mentioned that is a separate entity. The facilities are part of how we work. They have to be an integral part of the, how they work. They can't be a separate part. So by tying those two together, viewing the strategic, strategic plan as part of our vision and mission, and we'll have goals and objectives in that plan, not just tactics, which have been talked about right now, is kind of, that's what people are talking about, is the tactics to get the strategic plan done. We need a vision, and, and a vision that is big and bold, and then a short-term and a long-term strategic plan to reach that. Within that strategic plan, the funding will come out of it. The priorities will be set out of that plan, not the other way around. There will be very hard decisions, and that's what leadership is about. Everybody's not gonna get everything they want. Every teacher won't get everything they want. Every kid won't get everything they want. And certainly, every parent won't get everything they want. But as a community, if we can come together and create a plan, one that is inclusive of all the different parts, the administration, the teachers, the community, if we can bring in outside experts, people like the Aspen Institute, who have a lot of, they're, they're actually doing a ton of research in academics right now, that we could, we should poach off of them, I think. Maybe they give it for free. If we can bring all that together, I think we'll solve this issue of balancing and managing. It will be, it'll be pretty obvious.
Great. Next is John.
I've got three kids in college right now, so I'm financing a lot of schools. That's, I, I appreciate what everybody's saying here. I think this is something that we have to tackle. I'm gonna change it a little bit. I, I appreciate Katie, what you said about our facilities plan, and you, you, you gotta shoot high. We need, we need to shoot high with our strategy, make good, good goals, and see, see how the funding falls in place. But I, I wanna talk, you know, a little bit about public-private partnerships. And I know that's kind of a scary word for a lot of people, but we have some serious talent in this town. We have a lot of resources. AEF is an example of public-private partnership. But, you know, to address students, to address housing for teachers, we have a lot of talented developers. We have people we can pride, donate land. We have people, the city and county, we need to get them on board. And we need to work with what this town has to offer to create some public-private partnerships to build teacher housing. I really like what Habitat did down in Basalt, where the, where the teachers have skin in the game with sweat equity. We need to be thinking of ideas like that, where people are, have skin in the game. And we need to, we need to tap the resources of this town. We have, you know, I'm not opposed to a developer making a buck or two if we can get a lot of teachers housed. I'm not opposed of increasing density at the ABC if we can get some teachers housed. I want us to think creative, creatively, creatively on this. We're, we can solve these problems, but we can't just do it in the traditional model of passing a tax, doing a bond. We need to get people involved. We need to get this community involved. And that, so I just wanna talk about that a little bit. We need to partner, you know, my kid, my daughter was a theater kid. We need a new district theater. We need to partner with the other people using that district. San, Aspen Santa Fe Ballet, Theater Aspen, Aspen Community Theater, let's all partner up and do something good. Same with for a field house. Let's do some good by partnering with the city and other entities in this town. Thanks.
Patsy.
Thank you. Well, I think like everybody else, I realize that this is a problem that we need to tackle together as a community. I think that, I mean, budgets are, you know, they're numbers and addressing priorities. And we need to address our priorities and then take a look at our budget and see, is there a place where we can move some money around, which is, you know, very hard to do. But again, being creative. I think, like John was saying, AEF, you know, using AEF, there are other nonprofits out there, actually, that help fund schools. And I think that researching some of those nonprofits and help bring in some of those resources can be really helpful to our district. And I think the housing, I think one thing that we need to do for our housing is we have to encourage our teachers to use the housing that's already in place in Aspen and Snow Mass and in Pitten County. There is a lottery system. It's not part of the school, but it is something that if there, we need to encourage our teachers to use it. In the meantime, I know that there is a lot of one and two bedrooms available in, in the city. And once you're in the system, I think, I, I live in employee housing, so I know this, that it's easy to rebid on something, like you were saying, Jim, that, to get, you know, a three-bedroom, if you start having a family. But those are things that are already in place and that we need to use, and help the teachers understand that these, that the housing is there. That having been said, you know, if we were to, and this is a little out there, I think, for some people, but if we were to not concentrate so much on the housing for the teachers and have them use what's already in place, then the money that we're spending on their housing, we could actually use to give them raises. So I know that we have purchased housing, but it's not housing a lot of people, and we're not on an even playing field for all the teachers. I think it's really hard. So again, I think being creative and reaching out to other resources, other nonprofits that are available in the, not even just throughout Colorado and throughout the states.
Jonathan.
Okay. For me, it's hands-down student learning. I'll suffer, suffer through a leaky roof if I can get a great teacher who's gonna give my kid the best education that they want. I mean, I love having a great football field, and the new turf is awesome, but if I have to choose, I'm gonna pitch, pick the education every time. I mean, that's just, I mean, the schools, the only place anybody in a community can get, in a public environment, an education for their child, is either doing it themselves or having public school. I mean, obviously, there's a couple variations on there, but that's the reason they're there. They're there to teach our kids. You know, I mean, I love football. I played football in college, but that's not the reason to go to school. The reason to go to school is to learn to read and write and add, and, you know, also socialize and learn to interact with the other people. But, you know, there's definitely, that is the number-one reason that a school needs to be there. And so, you know, just kind of getting back to where the money comes from, so here I got, of course, I have an Excel spreadsheet, but Aspen School District, the average state spending is $10,000, about $200 per student. We spend nine, $19,000, so almost $20,000 per student. We spend a lot on instruction, which is great. The problem is, most schools, and like other mountain schools, spend 56% of their instructional stuff on teacher salaries. We spend 48%. So we're basically spending on a lot of bells and whistles, but not putting the money where it gives you the most value add. Other things that are important, we underspend on student support and staff support, things like psychologists and helping our teachers be more effective and things like that. We spend 25% more on school administrators than other districts. The benchmark I use, we spend 66% more on district administration than other districts use. We spend four times as much, pretty much, on athletics and activities. So, you know, like we say, the strategic plan will come out, and that will help us make the hard choices. I mean, you have to, at the end of the day, move stuff from one bucket to the other. And if you really, you can't just turn to the teachers and say, well, we love you, and you want great education, and we want you to teach our kids well, but we're gonna spend all the money over here. So I think we've been inconsistent with that in the past, and that's what we need to change. And, you know, it's not gonna be easy. But I think also, you know, when you think about the board and what we can bring, it's important to you guys to consider the challenges we're facing, the experiences the people have up here, and how they can help the administration make these tough choices. Because being a board member is not just writing policy, it's making sure that that policy gets implemented well. And so that's kind of the, one of the real jobs of a board member, 'cause, you know, you can write the policy, we want all our kids to be successful. Okay? Well, but what are we making sure to be, that that really happens? And that's, you know, being a coach to the administration, knowing how to write a communication plan to improve the climate, knowing how to get into the numbers and help them decide, hey, look, maybe we're overspending here. Those are key things. So it's not just about being passionate about stuff. It's about helping the administration accomplish those goals and making sure you're holding them accountable for getting it done. So, you know, that's an important part of all this as well.
Thank you. So you can keep the mic. You're first up on the next question. Okay, so we're switching gears here, onto the next topic, about the district and charter school relationship. So what is your understanding of the district's relationship to the charter school? And you have two minutes to respond.
It's a relationship that struggled. It's gotten better. I think that they've made good strides. But definitely, the last time I was running, there was some, there were some issues on the table. There were also, in the interim here, there were some things that, you know, I'm sure from the community schools' perspective could have been handled better. And so I think that it needs to continue to be improved. Basically, you know, the, the charter school has its independent board and is able to run in a semi-independent manner. They receive funds from the Aspen School District. It is part of the Aspen School District. All of their numbers are in our numbers, so they make us look better because they do really well. And they've been doing a great job in teaching the kids, so that's great. And so I think it's, the important thing is to become closer. You know, there's no problem with the school. It, it does well. It's got a healthy environment. But there's definitely some things we need to do as a school district to also help them. The teachers there make a lot less money than they do at the Aspen School District. I don't think that's fair. You know, it's all the same district. There's no reason you should be making, I think it's like $8,000 less on average, if I remember correctly, just because you work in the Aspen Community School. These are all great educators. They're teaching all our kids. They're the same kids, you know, so there's no reason for these kinds of discrepancies to, to exist. And I think it should be more about working together and making sure that there's continuity, and that these kids are prepared to work, to come into the Aspen High School system and, and have a great time. The closer we can work together, the better it's, is for the kids.
Great. Jim Pomeroy is next on the same question.
Before I answer that question right off, he's gonna hate this, but I have to acknowledge that my son showed up today. His mother wasn't feeling good, so he actually came down here all by himself and supported his old man before he goes off to basketball. So I'm very proud of him, and I really thank him coming down, so. So I would like to have a much closer relationship. I think it's actually important. I think it was a, this idea of bringing the school in to becoming part of the school district, but then letting them get completely on their own, forming their own budget, coming up with all their own rules. I don't know that that's been a asset to, certainly not their staff, and it's certainly not maybe the, the children as well. And so I'd like to see us more in alignment with moving forward. More meetings between the Aspen Board and the Country Day Board, or Country Day, I'm sorry, Community School Board. I'd like to see all around a closer alignment in their budgets and, and strategic planning and everything else. They need to be part of our strategic plan. In terms of the second question, which didn't...
We're, we're not getting to that yet.
Ah, okay. Well, see, you pointed up, so I was gonna answer it.
Yeah, yeah.
But that would be the biggest thing, is I would see a lot more alignment between the two schools.
Great. Next up is Bettina on this first question.
So I think that the relationship hasn't been what it could be. And I, I think it's kind of interesting, because the results of the community school are actually really better than the, the rest of the district. And it, it seems like we could learn from that. What, why is this working so well here and not working as well over there? And that needs, that's, you know, more conversations, more meetings, more discussions. I know that there was... I know that there was a financial issue in the last year where the community school was owed some money that they didn't get, and I don't think that that's acceptable. It's interesting that the teachers make less but seem to be, have been happier. And I, going back to sort of what I said at the beginning, I like to ask questions. That's kind of what, that's my secret sauce, is to keep asking questions until we get to the point where we really understand what's going on. And I think that this relationship needs to go under that same kind of question and answer series to figure out what's working, what's not, and how can we do this better?
Next is Katie.
So, if I understand this correctly, and I hope I do, they're a charter school, which means all we do is give them money, with, and they have their own board. So, I'm not quite sure, I think that was the whole point of it being formed, I'm not quite sure why we need to get engaged in how they're running their district, or their school. Having said that, we have a number of schools in our valley who are all trying to do the same thing. And we all have kids that we're trying to educate and grow up to be great human beings. So, I see no reason why our district shouldn't be working with the community schools, shouldn't be working with Country Day, shouldn't be working with Basalt and Carbondale and Montessori to help progress education. Things are changing in how we educate our kids and what the requirements are for the 21st century. You know, what kind of STEM skills kids need today is different than it was 20 years ago. And I don't just mean the kids who are going into science and engineering, to STEM fields. You know, I run a manufacturing facility. I have a really hard time finding tradespeople who know how to use a computer. It is a skill set that everybody needs. We need to work together with all these schools. I don't think, from a financial viewpoint, we need to be in their business, they have their own board and their own, their own school. If it's working for them, great. But we should all work together with ideas and best practices. We all have the same goals and objectives. We're not really, I mean, we're competing against each other's for teachers, granted, but we're all trying to do the best for the kids.
John, you're next.
Once again, Katie, you kind of stole what I was gonna say. I would, I wanna ask that question, you know, the other way around. What does the charter school want from our district? They are a charter school. They are an independent school. They, they're created to be different. Their mission is different because they're, they're a different entity. They have their own governance. They, you know, we give them money. So, I would like to know if they want a better relationship with us, you know? I wanna, you know, I do think that, I really appreciate what you said, we need to be working together with all the schools and with the common mission of education. So, if the charter school, like you said, Bettina, is doing something well, how do we learn from that? That's a good question. That's a good question. And if, you know, Montessori is doing something well, how do we learn from that? You know, Waldorf, they're doing something well, how do we learn from it? We should be doing more of that inter-agency communication, for lack of a better word, and try to figure out how we can better our kids in all ways. But, you know, my understanding is the district's relationship is, charter school is their own entity. So, thanks.
Patsy.
Yes, my understanding is, yes, that it is a charter school and that we, they are their own entity, but I do feel like there has been some friction and that we should be supporting every school if we can, help support schools all around us, as other schools would try to help support us. And I think that, most recently, I believe, we were, we held back $200,000 that was owed to the community school, and I think that that certainly should be repaired to them. We need to repair that relationship. I think that was, the money came to us for them and we never passed it over to the charter school. And if that's one of our jobs, is our relationship to a charter school is to actually give them the funding, then we need to do that, and that hasn't been done properly. So, I think that's one thing that needs to be repaired, and I also think, like everyone else here has said, that we can learn from them. They, their scores are better on a lot of the tests, certainly their reading scores, for sure, so let's take a look at it. What are they doing differently that we could be doing to help our students?
Thank you. Okay, moving on to this next question, the second part of the question is, and this goes to Bettina first. What is your position on eighth grade matriculation from the Aspen Community School to the Aspen High School?
Okay, I said, uh-oh, 'cause I'm not really sure that I understand the question?
So, right now, Aspen Community School students no longer are automatically eligible to attend Aspen High School. They have to be in the district to go to AHS.
Oh, okay. Interesting. So, they don't have to be in the district to go to community school?
Right, but it's on a lottery system.
So, I, you know, the situation with the school and who gets to be in it is in flux. Birth rates in Aspen are actually going down. Why do I know this? It's random. Birth rates are going down, but enrollment is continuing to go up. And that's partially because there are families who moved to the district specifically because it's a great district and we want to be here and we want to be in nature and all that kind of stuff. We recently opened places to a number of students through a lottery system, and that, to me, is a leading indicator that we may have some more spaces available. And it seems to, kind of along with what we've been talking about, that if, if we consider the charter school to be within the district, then they should be allowed to matriculate to the high school, in my opinion.
Great. Next up is Katie to answer that question.
Thanks. So, right now, the school has been accepting out of district kids, and there's a very interesting process that happened last spring, that I think there were some communication challenges around exactly what it was and how it happened that led to all of this, or was part of all of this discussion. I believe in the high school. First, we have space for more kids and are just coming up through the middle school currently. The larger number of, the larger the high school can be, in my mind, the more opportunity we can offer kids through different classes, through new IB programs, or more IB programs, more IB classes, and give the kids a wider variety of coursework. And not just IB, also trade classes, shop classes, things like that, for kids who might not be going on to college. So, my first position is, outside of community school, I think, as large as we can make our high school with our current facilities, the better. As long as it's not costing us more. We have a certain amount of space that we can use. We have a certain amount of teachers who need to be fully utilized. I am all for it. There is a cost, though, obviously, when you add more teachers. It's not just the teacher salary. You gotta find a place for them to live. You gotta train them, all those other financial things we talked about before. I'm not sure I have a strict opinion on whether the community school kids can come to the high school or not at this point. I just haven't seen the, I haven't seen the data on it. But I do think we need to have as, we need to fully utilize the space that we have and have as many, many opportunities for the kids as possible.
Great, thank you. John is next.
It's kind of, it's ironic, though. We're always paired up. It's good.
Yeah.
Something happened there. You know, our first mandate is to teach kids who lived in our district. That is our first mandate. If we have room, let's bring them in. Let's create a coherent, non-confusing policy on how to bring kids into this system, but I think we need to be, and maybe give priority to the Aspen Community School. I haven't really studied this issue. It's kind of new to me. I just know that our first priority is to the district. And if some people are moving, you know, we, yes, we don't have as many kids being born here. We've got a lot of people moving here, and a lot of people are moving here for the schools. You know, we were in that position, living in Carbondale at first, and then Dr. Mitchell said, "You need to get into the Aspen schools." So, we got convinced John McBride to let us build at North 40. So, that's what you gotta do. Gotta get in district. So, my main position is our priority is for the district kids. If we have room, we gotta fi, find, figure out a coherent way to get more kids in and maybe give Aspen Community School a priority in that issue. So, thanks.
Next is Patsy.
Thank you. Yes, I would agree. I think our first priority is to district kids. I think that when you go to the community school, when you're out of district, you know that going into it, that you are going there until eighth grade, and if you're not in district, then you're going to the district to which you belong. So, if it's Basalt or Carbondale, that's where you will be going. Agreed that if there is space, then we need to find a fair way to allow the spaces to be filled, but I do think that our first priority is to our district.
Jonathan.
Just had a clarification question, if anybody can answer. There's a lottery system, but priority is given to Aspen School District kids, correct? Okay, yeah. So, I think this is, huh? Right, but the community school has a lottery system, and, you know, priority is given to all the Aspen School District kids. So, they say if there's 100 spots and there's 91 Aspen School District kids, they fill them up first and then there's eight left over. So, I think my answer is, they should be allowed, because this is something you can plan for, and I think it's much more detrimental to child's learning. I mean, you were talking about, put the kids first, to have them, force them to go to another school district when it's something that, you know, when that person comes to the school district, even if they're from out of district, we get the money. So, as long as you plan for it and you know the amount of school, of class size and all those things, it's not that difficult of an equation. I mean, you just need to make sure, here, we're not busting at the seams in all the different things. Actually, it seems like enrollment, like Bettina said, there's a lot less people that can afford housing, so there's less families having kids. There's Mick. He's given me lots of data on this and the curve goes like this. So, basically, more and more people will need to move here to be able to fill the schools in the future. And if we don't have housing for them, the kind of question is, how are we gonna do that? So, we're gonna have to draw people from out of district to continue to fully fund our schools. Otherwise, we're just shooting ourselves in the foot and creating a funding gap. So, if we build this huge, new, beautiful facility, but don't have the kids to fill it, you know, who are we doing ourselves a favor? So, I think this is something that is definitely able to, you're able to plan for it, because the community school is a certain size, has a certain number of students. You have an eight-year vision as to when they're gonna be showing up on your door, and it's better for the child, and it's also good to have our schools full. So, until the day that we're saying, you know, we're absolutely double in all our class sizes and we can't do it, I don't think one or two per year out of district kids from Basalt is really gonna make a big impact, and the downside for the kids is a lot worse.
Jim, you're next.
The short answer is maybe. So, the, basically, the problem is, we're not answering, we're not asking the first questions that need to get answered before we can answer this question. The first question is, how big can we be? What size do we want to be? How many kids can come to our school? What do our facilities hold? How many teachers? I mean, all those questions have to get answered first. Our strategic plan, hopefully, will start leaning towards those answers. But once we've figured out a cap, we are, that's it. I think we need to be smart about what our cap needs to be, but once we've created it, it is who we are. Now, if we have a situation like this last year, where we need more students to keep our budget at a steady level, then yes, I think any out-of-district students who are graduating from eighth grade at the community school should have first priority, obviously. They're part of our district. But beyond that, no. We, you know, my wife and I and our two children lived in a tiny little crappy little two-bedroom apartment for years because it was important that our kids were in the district. We lived in what we could afford at the time to stay in the district. And this is a choice. People do make a choice, and they, and it's hard and it's a struggle, but they can do that. Now, like I said, they are part of our district. If there's room, of course, they should have first priority.
Thank you. Next up, John starts this one. We turn to board governance. Given the coherent governance structure of the district, explain how you will become or have become familiar with this structure. And you have two minutes.
Is the second question, did you attend Board Academy?
That's a separate question.
'Cause I attended Board Academy.
Great, easy.
I was the only one to graduate it last year. Can we just make it one?
Feel free, yeah, yeah.
So, make it easy. You know, I, last year, I attended Board Academy for the purpose of trying to figure out what kind of animal this is and whether I want to get involved with the school board. I am pretty big on this coherent governance structure. I think it's very, very important. I think there's some things that it protects our teachers, it protects our students really well, and it keeps, keeps the structure that we need to have. I mean, there is, we're a board. We have to operate on broad policy decisions, and then we have an employee, the superintendent, who executes that, those decisions. And when the board starts getting into operational mode, I think that's when things get dangerous, especially for our teachers. I think the, I'm not gonna go there. There's a couple issues that have happened recently where our, where our board starts getting into the minutia of operations, and we hire professionals, we ask them to execute on those issues. Now, there's one area I think the board governance has gotten in the way, and that's in our issue of communication. We need to really work at how the board communicates to its staff and its administrators and break down that veil that is there. There, we are not, like I said in my write-up, we're not five lofty people up there on high doing things. We need to break through with communication into, down into the schools and the teachers and really help this, help them be better at what they do. So, that's one area that the board governance has gotten in the way. I think it's very important with, like I said, protection of staff, and if we don't have an organization and we bypass that organization, we will do detriment to the climate and culture of the school. So, if a teacher bypasses their administrator and goes to the board with a problem, and the board goes and pushes pressure on the administrator to fix that problem, that teacher just created a real big problem with the culture in their, in their department. Because the other teachers are sitting there going, "Wait a second. I'm playing by the rules and I'm not being, being allowed this privilege of having a problem solved by a board member." So, we gotta be careful. It's very important. I believe in it, and I think it's a, it's something that we need to, you know, we talked about the superintendent. The board needs to define how we're gonna act and how we're going to be a board prior to hiring the superintendent, 'cause if they think that we're, they're getting a complete coherence governance thing and we're not acting like that, then we're gonna have a very short-term superintendent. So, thanks.
Thank you. So, Bettina is next. Since we're combining the two questions, you have three minutes to answer both.
Well, I did not attend the Board Academy, so we can start there. I, you know, I have two teenagers and several jobs, so I have to pick what I'm gonna do. And I chose to go to the Board of Ed meetings, as well as the SAC and the DAC and the principal breakfasts and the superintendent breakfasts instead of the academy. I've also had a checkered past. I ran a dance studio and then I ran sales for a large financial services technology company, so I'm sort of familiar with learning on the job, and that was my thought with the board. So, as far as coherent governance is concerned, I completely... So as far as coherent governance is concerned, I completely agree with everything John said. I think that it's a great structure. My understanding from the consultant that we use for the climate and culture is that there are pieces of coherent governance that we are not practicing to our best abilities, and that some of the issues that we saw that popped up over the last couple of years may in fact be due to not fully following coherent governance. I'm saying that as something that was said to me, I don't actually have personal experience with it. That having been said, the big issue that seemed to pop up with coherent governance was, was communication and this feeling that the board was doing something, it was all very, you know, hush, hush, and the community didn't know what's going on, and I would love to get a better understanding, if I'm elected, of how to bridge that gap.
Thank you. Jim Palmero is next. Yeah.
Thank you, John, for saying pretty much everything I was gonna say. I appreciate that. The, I actually think that, it's kind of funny that I'm working for the city right now because the city just recently went through a very similar situation. We had a longstanding director who, in many ways, was running the board rather than the other way around. And we can't go on that way. That can never happen. What happened with our last superintendent, unfortunately, though, he was a symptom, he wasn't the virus himself. He definitely, I did, I think, needed to go, but he was a symptom of not having strong, coherent governance. The board must make clear policy, the superintendent needs to execute that policy and then show clearly how those results have been met. That's it. It's the end of, that's the end of that conversation. And I did go through the Board Academy. I didn't go to every single class because I was also doing the DAC this last year, and I was pretty busy with that, but I did go through it and it was helpful, especially the ones on finance.
Thank you. Katie's next. Yes.
So no, I did not go through the Board Academy, so I have no impressions of it, but I am, I'm confident that my 25-plus years of board experience in various not-for-profits will help, help me, bring me up to speed fairly quickly. As far as coherent governance goes, I don't think it's inherently bad. There's been a lot of discussion in the district, oh, it's this policy governance coherence governance is bad. I'm just not sure we're practicing it quite the right way. It should not be taken as an abdication of responsibility of the board to manage the superintendent and everything that is going on at the school through the superintendent. And it should not, it should also not be an excuse to not communicate with the rest of the district. And I think communication is where, one of the spots where it's been falling apart in the past, where the board has been not as open to hearing from teachers directly, or there's been fear of repercussions, things like that, if you're viewed as going around the super. So I think some modification of the way it has been practiced is, is in order, and making, making it clear that, yes, the only employee of the board is the superintendent, but the communication and abdication of responsibility for what that board, what the superintendent does is, is not okay. Coherent governance is not a zero-sum game. It's not either coherent governance or not. There are, there are ways to practice it appropriately and different interpretations of exactly what it means, and I just think that that needs to be revisited as a board.
Great. Jonathan is next.
All right. So I think corporate governance is fine. It's a governance system, so all governance systems can work or not work, it depends on what the people are doing with them. So, and I think this also comes back to kind of what's the purpose of a board and what you look for in a board, you know? This is a different kind of board because it's a publicly elected one, but most boards are chosen on the base of experience, and the board is there to help the administration and to coach the administration in how to produce the results that the shareholders are asking for. I mean, that's kind of their purpose. They sit there and they say, hey, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? We need to make sure you're complying with these things. We need to make sure over here that the numbers are, are sound, and we have a responsibility there. But a lot of what happens in, in a board is, they, they coach, they help, they say, have you thought about this? Have you thought about that? And they assure that things get implemented correctly. So here's, I'm gonna read from the policy governance here what I think the problem is. So here's the OE8 monitoring report, the latest one, and it says, "The policy. Develop compensation and benefit plans to attack and retain the highest quality employees and by compensating employees consistently with the applicable marketplace, including but not limited to the organizations of comparable size type and to the extent permitted by available resources." Okay. So the comment and analysis about this is, "The Aspen School District continues to have a competitive salary structure as compared to other school districts in Colorado. District administration spent two years working with the AEA, et cetera, et cetera, and investigating options. It appears the district will have a new teacher salary schedule in place." So this was right before they approved it. Does anybody believe that actually gives you any proof that, that we have a competitive salary schedule? I mean, that's all that's written there. So there's nothing that actually shows some numbers comparing this district to the other. There's nothing that shows what's our average salary compared to the rest of the country or the rest of the districts in Colorado, you know? So I think this is the issue. And it's not about so much having the governance systems, it's about where's the implementation and where's the real data to show that this is really happening? Because, I mean, this is one that was in compliance, approved. So it just flatly states, based on this statement, as opposed to actually showing information, numbers, details. I mean, you know, when you, and when you're in a private company and you go out and you say, okay, I need to hire a new person, you go out and you look at everybody in the area, how much they're making, what their salary is, what their benefits are, so you can make sure that according to your company policy, you're paying the right salary. And so, you know, that is where the policy governance needs to be improved. It's not the board members getting involved in the day-to-day operations. That's not what the board's for. What the board needs to do is make sure that when I say that I want you to have a competitive salary structure, you really need to prove it to me. I don't just need, you know, 30 words saying, yeah, we're competitive. That's not the way it works. And so that's where this system has broken down, and it became more about producing, this is like a whole book every year, 220 pages of things like this that get written in our district. And it's actually a shame because, you know, it hasn't helped us solve culture and climate, it hasn't helped us keep our teachers' salaries competitive, and it's not because it's not a good system at its heart, it's because the way it's being used like this. And just to close on this, I did a word search on this thing, there are like over 20,000 words in the, in all the policy governance and everything, and like teachers is mentioned like three times. So if we, you know, if this is really what the core of the board says our mission is and what we want, you can't mention teachers three times in a, in a place where it's almost all teachers. You know, I mean, that's the reality of the situation. So those are the things, it's not that the system is bad, it's the thing, the thing is we need to use it better.
Great. Patsy.
Well, ditto to everybody. No. I agree, though. I think that when practice, the board needs to decide exactly how they are gonna practice policy governance or coherent governance, and I think that defining that will help going forward how we actually do practice it and so that people understand it. I mean, when I first read coherent governance on our website, I had to read it like four or five times. I was like, what is this again? Like, how does this exactly work? And I do agree, we do not want people going, you know, to the board for all these answers or for problems. Like, that's not how this should work. But if everything's working effectively and if we put forth, if we come up with a plan and put, put that forth and are transparent about exactly how it's going to work, then I think the policy can work much better than it has seemed to work in the past. And I use just the climate and culture as an example of why I think that it hasn't worked because I think that it, you know, teachers and people were coming forward to express how they were feeling, but then they didn't feel that it was being heard, and then they were going around to board members, and it was just, it didn't work. So we need to find a way to make it work for our school.
And did you attend the academy?
I did not attend the academy.
And Jonathan, did you?
No.
No.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna try to answer differently. I've been through three years of Board Academy on back and everything.
Gotcha, okay. So Bettina gets the mic. We're now at the point where we get to hear your final closing thoughts. You all have given some really great thoughtful answers, so please tell us why you are the best candidate to serve on the Board of Education for the Aspen School District, and you have two minutes.
Okay, my husband is like mouthing things from the backs, which I'm gonna ignore. You know, honestly, I think this is a great group of people, and I'm not just blowing smoke, I'm thrilled for our community that all of these smart, experienced, interested people have shown up, and I don't think you guys can do badly with any of us. I honestly don't. That having been said, I, I think that I am a good candidate for a couple of reasons. One is, I've only been here for four years, this is true. That's given me the ability to come in and see things with fresh perspective. I'm not, I'm not a local yet because I haven't been here for 20 years, but there are certain advantages to that. If we always look at the same thing over and over the same way, we start to get blind to it, and I think that there's some advantage to coming in fresh and getting deeply involved, which is what I've done. I have spent a ton of time volunteering at the school, being in the buildings, talking to the teachers, talking to the kids, talking to the parents, getting, really understanding what's going on. And given that, I feel like I'm really well-positioned to take on some of the challenges that face us, in particular, looking for the next superintendent. And like Katie, I've had a big corporate career where I've done a lot of hiring of people and some firing of people. I know what leadership looks like, I know what excellence looks like, and I have a lot of organizational experience in making that happen. So that's it for me.
Thank you. Jim, you're next.
I think that I bring unique qualities. I think that while I have been here for a long time, far longer than I probably really want to admit, I, I also have brought my, so my children, when they were very young, did not have a great experience when they first entered into the elementary school. They, we needed to find another solution for them. They, my oldest, went all the way through eighth grade at Aspen Country Day School. I got to see a different school and a different district, but dealing with very similar problems, very similar issues, dealing with the same community and a lot of the same parents. I think that I bring that perspective, the long run of looking at the whole community for, over a long period, but also looking at how other schools can deal with the situation and how it can be fixed. Right now, there is a, the biggest thing is the transparency and the communication. And if, I think that having the communications, sorry, having the connections with the overall community that I have puts me in a unique situation for talking to the community, for listening to the community, for how to even begin that process, because I think it's a huge change. We're looking at a sea change, really, in how the board and our superintendent in the future here will be talking to students, teachers, staff members, community members, and other leaders. I think that I bring something that's, my experiences will, are different than almost anyone else's, and that's, and that's what I can bring.
Great. Jonathan is next.
So I think the people who are voting, what you have, and the way I would look at this is, we're in a period of time where we're gonna pick a new leader for the next, hopefully, 10 to 20 years for our school. We're gonna develop a strategic plan, kind of for the same time period, and what you want, when you're looking for the board, is you want the most experienced people and that stuff sitting on that board to help you make the right decisions for the long term. And it's kind of a unique moment from that perspective, you know? In another time, I would say, it could be, it could be a little bit different, you might look for a different mix, but if you are talking about the next four years, you want the most experienced people who have the most talent in those areas that you can get, and that's what you should be looking at. And then I think you should also be looking at, and so, based on that, even if you don't vote for me, please vote for somebody with that experience. Okay? Nothing against the other people, but if, if I could not vote for myself, that's what I would be looking for. Okay? And the other thing that you want to look for is, how much have the people really put into this over the last couple of years? Because, I mean, I think I can safely say that I probably put in, you know, a lot of hours into this, that it would be tough for anybody who's sitting up here to match in terms of my commitment over this over the last three years, in terms of knowledge of the board, digging into the stuff from the DAC perspective, knowledge about school finances, all these kinds of things that hopefully I've been able to show you that I have here tonight. And so I think it's also important to say, while we're all passionate about that, and everybody hears passion about being on the board and being here today, what's the work you've done to really show that passion? Because one thing is to come up here and say, I'm passionate about it, and, you know, I learned a lot about policy governance and X, Y, Z thing, but, you know, so, okay, but what have you done to prove that? And, you know, what have you, what's your time commitment been and what, what's the impact you've made over the last couple of years? And so I think that's what differentiates, ah, differentiates me, and so I hope I got your vote. Thanks.
Thank you. Patsy, you're next.
I, I feel the same way that Bettina, what Bettina said, I think we are all qualified, great qualified candidates. I think one of the things that the board hasn't had is, most recently, there's only one board member who has children in the school, and that's Dwayne. And I think that to actually feel the pulse of the school and to really get an idea of what is happening, I think it is important to have the children in the district. You know, I'm at school every day and I feel what's happening there, I know what's happening there. I'm talking, if it's not to, you know, Liz, the new principal of the middle school, I'm talking to Karen and Corinne, and you get an idea really of how things are working. And I think that is very important and could be one of the reasons why, for a while, the board didn't see what the climate and culture was in the district because there wasn't, they didn't have kids in the, in the school. And I think that I have, like, I know that Katie and Bettina have said this, but I feel I've hired and I've fired plenty of people in my life, and I do think that one of the things that we do need to look at is how we hire, our hiring processes and what we do, and we need people in there that are qualified, we need to know how to identify those people, and I have done this and I know that I can do this, and when, specifically when we're talking about our superintendent. I really would like to see, I, I personally would like to be on the board when my kids are in school so that I can follow what's happening and what's going on and take our school and bring our school to where it needs to be, in my opinion. And I've had the same experiences with my kids, that, you know, they've really struggled in certain areas of our school, and we have looked at other districts. I've researched schools across the country for them, you know, they were too young to go to boarding school, but there were certain schools that I thought about going to, and I think there's a lot of things that we can do and that I, I have researched that we, we can do at our school and bring it to where it needs to be.
John, you're next.
Thank you, everybody, for being here and listening to this. I'm, I'm a local architect, I have my own firm, and...
I'm, I'm a local architect, have my own firm, and yes, I've hired and fired people. But I have, I, I think as an architect, I've developed two types of thinking. One is the big-picture, creative, problem-solving brain, left side of my brain. And then I've also developed highly detailed code nuance brain that Jim is so familiar with, that we, we have to work in these two worlds. We, and I think that kind of thinking is the right kind of person for the board. We have to dive into some minutia and get after it, but we also have to provide big-picture thinking and creative problem solving. I also, the thing that Board Academy taught me the most, and I, and I asked Susan and Suzie this, is what's the learning curve on this job? And this job has a nine-to-12-month learning curve. And it's, I'm not coming here thinking I'm going to solve and jump in and do everything right the first time. We have a learning curve. I've got a lot of humility on this because I know that I will bring a passion, a creativity. I will study. I will learn. It has been a privilege writing for the Aspen Times, these essays that start at 1,000 words and have to get down to 400, because it makes you think. I will bring critical thinking skills to the table and I will endeavor to be up to speed on these issues as soon as possible. I also am a listener. I'm an active listener. This summer, I had the privilege of doing our community listens. What a great program and I encourage everybody to do that. But it teaches you that you need to be an active listener. And it also teaches you that you need to solve problems. And sometimes, there's two ways of solving a problem around here. One is with a baseball bat and the other's on bended knee. And I want to be solving problems within our community. Aspen is unique. We are a unique community. I want to get results that preserve our community and are the best results for our kids. Thank you.
Thank you. And Katie, you've got the last word.
So, I'd like to use this opportunity to talk about finance. If anybody wants to. No? Okay. Maybe not. So, I am also thrilled to be running alongside five other great people who are all eminently qualified and three acting board members that are continuing that are also extremely qualified. So, I think the, any way this election ends up, we're all going to win as a community. My focus, that I want to keep a focus on if I were to be elected, is the kids. They, they're the reason, as I said before, they're the reason we're here and they're the reason I'm here. That's what I'm passionate about. We need to be teaching each and every kid to his or her ability level and we need to be continuing to raise the bar for those kids so that we're teaching them what they need to learn to be effective, happy, healthy adults in the 21st century. And that includes academics and, and social-emotional and outdoor ed skills, all of that, all together. If we're not doing that for our kids, we're, we're failing as a community. So, as a community, we need to come together and do that. Having said that, the fundamental skill set of an elected official is the ability to listen. And I am hopeful that I have that ability and I will, I, I promise that I will listen to each and every person who comes to us to the board, whether it's a teacher, administrator, a support staff, a parent, whatever it may be. I'm a true believer in setting up open lines of communication and not just hearing, but listening. Also transparency and accountability. And we've mentioned that, this a lot tonight. It doesn't, it, it's important. And I think it's something that's been lacking that I also promise to be, be open about. And there's a lot of low-hanging fruit we can work on right away and then some longer-term issues. But thank you for sitting through this tonight. Thank you for those listening on the video. I am passionate about this and I hope I have the opportunity to serve you all.
Thank you. Thanks to you all for your time and your commitment. Thank you. Thanks to you all for coming and thanks to you all for your time and commitment to the district. We really appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you.